Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on this Monday, March 6th of 2023. Welcome, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. And we're going to first do our invocation and pledge of allegiance. So if you'd like to stand, please stand, and we'll remain standing for the pledge after the invocation. I think tonight we have Pastor Juan is here with us, the boss.
No, but I know the boss. Thank you, Mayor. Will everybody just take a minute to bow your heads and clear your hearts and your minds and just allow the presence of God to come in? Lord, we come to you this evening seeking your will, your presence, and your power in our city. As we come, Lord, we lift up our mayor, the city council members, all of the supporting staff, the police and fire departments, the school and the school boards, and all those who will come and bring before this chamber issues and concerns, Lord. We ask for your wisdom now, Lord, your discernment, your understanding, to pour out of the windows of heaven, pour out and fall fresh upon us as we come before you tonight, Lord. Let every decision that is made, Father, be coated in your love and your peace and your joy. Lord, we ask you to release your spirit in this place, in us, in this chamber, throughout our city, Lord, so that every visitor that comes to our city will feel your presence. May the peace of God dwell in our city, and may your love, your peace, and your joy rain over every community, Father. May your righteousness, your truth, oh, Lord, your mercy and your justice be the foundation of Casa Grande, which is built upon. Let the healing waters flow to every household, every family, every nook and cranny in our city, Lord. We asked all these things in your precious, precious Son, Jesus' name, knowing and believing in Mark 11:22, 23, and 24, what Jesus told his disciples, "Have faith in God; for if you do, you can tell the mountain whatever the issue may be, to be cast into the sea. If you pray, believe, and have no doubt, then what you pray for it shall be done." So, Father, we come to you tonight, knowing your word and what your word says. So this thing, Father, tonight is done, is done, is done, and the blessings are coming, coming, coming. In Jesus' name we pray, in Jesus' mighty and matchless name we pray. Amen, and thank you, Jesus.
Do you please turn me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
I know you know the boss. And thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Levener. All right. Gloria, please let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to or consider the approval of the minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023, and also the Arts and Humanities Commission regular meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2023.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Am I hearing something? Oh, Chief, is that your radio? Could you turn that down a little bit? Chief? Is it your radio? Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, next item is item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated February 15th through 28th, 2023 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda. Are there any changes from staff, Larry?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody on council, any changes, anything?
No.
All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting agenda is approved as presented. No special presentations, so we'll move right into consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything from the council that anybody wants to remove? Anyone in the public to remove something that's on our consent agenda? All right, seeing none, then. Yeah, this isn't the opportunity for public comment? It's coming up next. It'll come up next. Okay.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, our next item is public comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to come to the podium. And I want to remind anyone who does come forward that you have three minutes. The items that you discuss are not on the agenda, so we cannot comment on them since that is state law. And just want to open the floor to the public at this point in time. And ma'am, if you want to come up to the front and speak, this is your opportunity. Well, this is your opportunity to speak to the council if you'd like to be heard. All right, well, I'm going to throw this open to Grace. No, that's not Grace. Pastor Nick, sorry. Put Grace Church under your name, so I said the wrong thing. Sorry about that. So please state your name and your address for the records, please.
My name is Mark Benner.
My name is Nick Gilliam, Pastor Grace.
Our church address is 1805 East Sierra Parkway. We're at the end of that street. We're behind Walmart.
I know where you're at.
All righty. And, well, we wanted to talk about flooding, and we know how important it is because it's in your planning department right there for people to take it home and avoid flooding situations. But we have a serious flooding on Sierra Parkway, and it's been going on since the summer of 2021. We've had a car get stuck that had to get towed the next day because the tow driver said, "No, I'm not, you know, going in there today. Do you need your car?" And we had 25 cars get stuck once in the parking lot because the rain was going on during the service. And we were real fortunate. We had a big SUV in the neighborhood come over and said, "Form a caravan," and got us out of there. But we were there for almost three hours. And we've had to cancel services a couple of times, which means, in rough terms, making 40 phone calls. Most people don't check their emails or answer their phones, you know, at eight in the morning when they're getting ready for church. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention, and had some good progress today. Ricardo and a couple other gentlemen are aware of it now. And it's happened three times where the road has had to be closed. Twice, we've had to close the services. And it's just something that needs to be addressed. And I believe we're on the right track because the gentleman that called me today, in the way I understood it, he says, "You know, there could be three phases, and then the last one would be a berm." So we wanted to bring it to your attention, and we thank you for giving us this opportunity. And Mr. Rains told me I could send him some photos of the flooding because that's what shows it. We're talking 80 feet, maybe 18 to 22 inches, road completely covered for 30 hours at a time. And I want to apologize. I forgot to say good evening to the mayor, to the city manager Rains, city council members, city clerk, and staff. My mistake.
Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
And if you want to speak, you have another three minutes if you'd like to speak. I think we have the gist of the problem. So, and I think staff is, it's not agendized, so I can't talk about it. Sorry. But I know we're working on it.
Here's where it is. Leaving everybody. I thought it was a beautiful day in the neighborhood today.
And please state your name and your address for the records, please.
I'm Jean Henderson, Box 10061, Casa Grande, 85130, and I've been homeless two years as of the 30th of April. I've only got three tonight. The first one is regarding the numbers of homeless in the town. I guess it's because I am. I notice people all over. There are more people that I've been noticing. They live in their cars, their trucks, their SUVs. A lot of them go over to the library to change and just to go through items. And I sleep over there because it's safer for me. A recommendation is that maybe they could have someone, that the women could have a woman to teach them how to, what to do, because when you're thrust into that, you have no idea what you're doing. And I guess the men could use something like that, too. But the women especially, and if they're women who are still childbearing ages, and a lot of them do have children in their vehicles. Okay, I just learned about this the other day. On the 11th of March, Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, at the First Presbyterian Church, will be Plarn, P-L-A-R-N, making. They need plastic bags that are unused from the grocery stores. I've been going around getting grocery bags to take. They also could use some empty paper towel racks, whole rolls. I'm not sure what they're doing with that. The plain mat, the Plarn mats are about two inches thick, and they're crocheted and knitted, and they go to, for the homeless to sleep on. Okay? And so I'm really, I'm really on to that whole thing. I don't know how to crochet anymore or knit. My last one, I don't know how you do this exactly, but I told them I would do it. I go over to Primera Iglesia Bautista del Sur Church every once in a while over near the library. They're having a really hard time now. I think the minister barely died. I'm not sure. People are not coming there much, and so they want to have a sale on, oh, no, they want to have Easter activities on the Saturday, the 8th of April, from 8:00 to 12:00, at the Reed Machore Park. Okay, but I don't know how to do that whole thing for them, but I told them I'd come in and ask. But they need a whole lot of help, and I'm going to do what I can do. So, anyway, thank you very much if you, for just listening, so, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight? All right, well, for all those who did speak tonight, just a general comment that please see staff, and they can help give you some guidance in terms of some of the, some of the subjects that were brought up tonight, including public meeting locations and permits and things you need. Okay. Seeing no one else, then I will close the floor tonight on public comments, and we'll move on to item I, which is Ward of Contracts. So we have item I-1.
Hello, good evening. Mr. Mayor McFarland, Mayor Protem Lavender, and members of the council. Staff recommends that mayor and council approve a contract with Cactus Asphalt with an amount of $200,469.05 and a contingency of $48,877.80 for repair and replacement of the South Operations Center. Total contract would not exceed $249,346.85. Parks Maintenance operates out of this facility. This is an approved capital improvement project for fiscal year 23, budgeted at $250,000. The asphalt at South Operations Center is well past its lifetime. The asphalt has large holes and cracks throughout the surface. Other areas have deteriorated. Cactus Asphalt would excavate, demo, and remove old asphalt. They will pave a three-inch depth and include striping. The cooperative is through One Government Procurement Alliance. If this project is approved, work will begin at the beginning of May. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council members? People call me crazy when I say we can't pave a parking lot for $200,000.
It's true.
There you go. I rest my case.
It's terrible. It's very expensive.
Thanks, thanks, David. Danny?
Problem.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5518. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Cactus Asphalt for asphalt replacement at the South Operations Center, authorizing expenditure of funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt in accordance with the terms submitted to One Government Procurement Alliance.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5518 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is our boards and commissions. I am happy to announce the reappointment of Andrea Varela for the term expiring on February 1st. This is for reappointment on the Community Services Advisory Board, which has been newly renamed. And Andrea's not here, is she?
No.
Okay. And then, well, we'll consider that first, so I need a motion to approve her appointment. Or can I do them all at the same time?
You can do them all at the same time.
Okay. All right, since it's all for the same board, okay. So this is all for the Community Services Advisory Board, and then the appointment of Tabitha Avery and Rodney Williams, their terms to expire on February 1st. And first, I want to thank all of them, Tabitha, Rodney, and Andrea, for their services and their commitment to the city of Casa Grande. So I would entertain a motion to approve all three.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the reappointment of Andrea Varela and the appointment of Tabitha Avery and Rodney Williams to the Community Service Advisory Board. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations to all of them, and thank you for your service. Next is our item K, which is our ordinances, resolutions, and other matters, subjects requiring action by the council. Item K-1, consider resolution number 5520.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city auditing firm, Henry &amp; Horn, merged with Baker Tealy US LLC late last year to become part of the ninth largest public accounting firm in the world. Tonight, mayor and council will hear from Brian Hemley, a partner of Baker &amp; Tealy, as he presents his firm's results of the fiscal year 2022 financial and single audits of the city. I would like to thank finance staff for the time and effort they put toward the preparation of the city's financial audit. I would take time out, with the permission of mayor and council, to thank Jackie Martinez, she's in the audience, if she would please stand, our accounting manager, and Ellen Rafidi, our senior accountant. Thank you so much. Before Brian makes his presentation, I would like to briefly present a report to mayor and council on the city's compliance with State Statute Number 41-1494, which prohibits any city, town, county, or political subdivision of this state from expending funds for training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex. The statute further prohibits any of these entities from requiring any employee to engage in training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex. Based on the staff's review of the general ledger activities of the city, staff informs mayor and council that nothing came to our attention, nor are we aware of the expenditure of city funds for training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of race, ethnicity, or sex. Further, the city did not require any employee to engage in training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of blame or judgment on the basis of sex, race, ethnicity, or sex. I will turn over the podium to Mr. Brian Hemley as he presents our fiscal year 2022 audit report.
Thank you, Angel, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. You might recognize me from the past few years. We have a good report tonight to give you guys. Thanks to Angel and her team. They've done an excellent job cleaning up the finances over the years, and we have, we're very excited to be presenting tonight's presentation. Let's see, I'm getting a, oh, try this one. There we go. Okay, so a couple of things I have to report to you, required by our auditing standards. We do provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. We don't provide absolute assurance. You've probably heard this spiel from me in the past. In order for us to provide absolute assurance, we'd have to test every transaction at the city. Instead, we give reasonable assurance where we do statistically valid sampling. We test your internal controls. We walk through them. We make sure that we don't see anything that comes out to us. If we did have findings in those situations, we would then project them over the entire population and report that to you and management. Note one of your financial statements. We'll have all your significant accounting policies. This year, the biggest change is for leases, the lease standard. The lease standard this year basically takes what we used to call operating leases, which is like rent expense or rent revenue, and it essentially puts it up on the balance sheet as receivable or as payable to be deferred essentially over the course of the contract. There were no issues with that. We helped implement that, but mostly Casa Grande did a great job getting that implemented themselves this year. So there were no findings related to that. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We had no uncorrected misstatements and no disagreements with management. So what you all want to know, was it a clean opinion? And yes, this year, we did provide a clean opinion on the financial statements, what we call an unmodified opinion. That's the first report. The second report we do is on compliance with internal controls over financial reporting. This is more related to making sure your internal controls are correct. You received a clean opinion on that as well. We had no significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and some very good news, your 2018-001 finding for financial statement closing process has been corrected and is no longer being reported in your financial statements. You did have a report for the federal single audit spending. This is whenever the city spends more than $750,000 of federal grant money in any one year. When that occurs, we're required by the federal government to do a specific audit on just the spending of that grant money. The major programs that the federal government required that we test this year were related to your community development block grants, the COVID money around those same block grants, and as well as your coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds that you received during 2022 and spent. Overall, the city spent $12.8 million in federal funding this year. The expenditure limitation report is the last report, oh, I'm sorry, you have a fifth report. This is the fourth report, expenditure limitation report. This is required by the state of Arizona. It's filed with the Auditor General's office. Your limitation this year for the city was $249 million of spending. The city calculated an expenditure limitation of $125 million that was actually spent, so you're well below the limitation for the year this year. That's been filed with the Auditor General's office, and it's been accepted. The final report is related to your The final report is related to your landfill, the ADEQ municipal solid waste landfill, and your compliance surrounding certain financial tests that we have to perform. All your financial tests passed, and you did receive a clean opinion on your landfill report this year. And that is my brief report. Very good news, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So we can operate for another year?
Yes.
Good to know. Does council have any questions? Lisa?
Just a comment. I just wanted to, well, thank you for the great report, and just to congratulate our finance and our accounting department. You know, we, in the past, have had some material weaknesses and some issues, so it's so nice when you see a report like this, and I know it's something that they work really hard. And so I'm just really happy to see all the changes you've made and improvements to make this. This is a big deal, and so I just want to congratulate everyone on a great report.
Yeah, definitely, Brian, thank you, and a big thank you to our, to Angel and her department, her staff, for a job well done, so thank you. Anybody else? I mean, that's on behalf of the council, so thank you.
Amen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right, then, I think there is a resolution required here, so Gloria, can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5520. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the fiscal year 2021-22 financial audit reports submitted by Baker Tealy US LLC and confirming compliance with Arizona Revised Statutes 41-1494 and 9-481H.
Mayor McFarland, I, I move to approve the resolution number 5520 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call? Vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next is item K2. This is consider resolution number 5519. And chief, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm very happy to be before you this evening to request authorization from you folks to accept grant funding from the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA as well. We applied for a SAFER grant. You'll hear that acronym a lot. It's the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Program. It's been in existence for a while. We applied for this grant in January of 2022. This particular grant cycle took extremely long time because of COVID. We received notice about a week and a half, two weeks ago. It's a competitive process. We have to fill out a very lengthy application, and it goes in and it gets graded. We are happy to report that there were eight agencies in the state of Arizona that received grants, and I think we got the third or fourth largest one. Phoenix and Tucson were greater than ours, but they are awarding us a grant in the amount That is funding to hire an additional 12 firefighters. Excuse me. I'd be remiss if I didn't also say that I'm very proud of our Assistant Chief, Tony LaFalls. It's very unusual to get, this is the second one of these we've gotten in three, three and a half years, to the tune of like $5.3 million direct money that comes to the city. And there's a couple of important things about this grant. One of the most important things is there's no matching at all. It's 100% grant funded, so the city doesn't have to match it at all. We essentially get full pay and benefits for 12 firefighters for that three-year period of time. He did, Tony LaFalls did a fantastic job. This is the second one he's written, and both of them that he's written have been awarded. So I'm very proud of him, and I'm happy to report that to you, and I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
Yeah, I just made comment, I know this is for three years, so at the end of three years, we'll, hopefully, those will have funding, and the city will be big enough to afford those 12 additional firefighters, but a great opportunity for us, so thanks, chief. Matt?
Chief and Assistant Chief, great job on getting this. When speaking with our firefighters, you know, one of the things they thought was most important was getting more of them with our growth, so you've found a great way to do that. A couple of questions. Do you think you'll have any problems finding them? I mean, what's our timeframe of hiring?
I don't think it's any secret. It's been very difficult to hire people. It's not like, it's not like it was five years ago. It is more difficult finding people. I mean, we have dispatchers that we hire, and they work one day and they resign, so, and I don't really understand that, but it happens with all jobs. Typically, our job, they come and they don't leave, but it's been a little bit more difficult than it has. We've made some changes to it, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to hire qualified people. This class, we have folks in the academy right now that are doing quite well, and I think two or three of them out of that group are from Casa Grande, so I'm confident we'll be able to.
Great, and then with this many more firefighters, do, are we going to need any more equipment and apparatuses at some point, or can we use what we have now?
You've already taken care of that. There is one thing we need.
I mean, I asked about equipment and apparatus.
Yeah, I heard you. You guys have done, and I've told you guys all this openly many times, you guys do very well on the apparatus stuff. We are seriously behind in station improvements and getting stations built, and I think you guys are all well aware of that. That's kind of my two big priorities, three big priorities right now are fire stations, getting more personnel, and the CON. So all three of those things, I think, are coming together. I think we'll have good news on all those things, hopefully, in the next month or two, and we're moving forward.
And I just wanted to say real quick, I was at work on the west side of town this evening after, between 5:00 and 6:00, and I heard sirens constantly. There was 12 calls on Pulse Point between 5:00 and 6:00 today for our firefighters, so I mean.
Yeah, our evening times between like 4:00 and 7:00 are extremely busy. All of our times are busy, but 4:00 to 7:00 at night is our really busy time. Twice tonight, we didn't have anybody available to go to call, so we were out there managing all that.
Again, great job, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Lavender?
Well, chief, knowing that the fire stations are a little ways off, how do you plan to strategically use these 12 personnel in the meantime?
Well, I don't think, well, I know, we can't hire these 12 people right now. We're limited, just like the police department is. We have kind of a cycle that we have to go through. We have to follow the academy cycles. We have an academy class that's in right now. They'll graduate in June, and then typically, a second class will start in July or August. When we hire somebody in July or August, they're not even a partially trained firefighter to come out and work at a station until November or December. I'm hopeful, we're working on some stuff strategically right now, figuring out a ways. We've got the apparatus now. You guys have purchased the ambulances already, and I feel pretty confident the CON will be resolved by then as well. And we're working with the city manager closely on all this stuff, so we have a plan, and we'll be fine with it.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, chief. All right, then I'll entertain a resolution number, please, Gloria, for item K2.
Resolution number 5519. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the US Department of Homeland Security, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds for the fiscal year 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disperse funds as necessary, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing other actions in support of the grant.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5519 as presented.
Second.
Hey, Brett, I have a question. It says authorizing Larry to receive the grant money for the year 2021. Is that an issue?
That's the year of the grant. It was the 2021 grant cycle.
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with our budget cycle. Okay, all right, just a question, sorry. All right, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, we'll move to item 11, which is our public hearings, and consider an ordinance number 1178.033.02.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item in front of you is an amendment to the Quartzon-Hennis P.A.D. to allow wireless telecommunication facilities. A little bit of background, this planned area development zone district is approximately 160 acres, and it's comprised of state-owned land at the southeast corner of Cottonwood Lane in Arizona. The subject amendment is just for a 78-acre portion of the P.A.D. that is designated for public or semi-public school. The request would enable Sun State Towers to add a wireless telecommunication facility as a permitted use. Primarily, the goal would be to replace an existing ball field light with a new light pole, no taller than 15 feet, taller than the existing pole, capable of handling three wireless carriers. But this amendment would enable other stealth or camouflaged wireless facilities to be proposed on the school site in the future. An example of a ball field light that is designed to accommodate a wireless facility is similar to the Union High School ball field light just off of Trekkle. It is somewhat camouflaged in that the wireless facility is attached to existing verticality, so it's a win-win because it doesn't result in a brand-new tower that stands out, but it's incorporated with existing features. Some other examples of camouflaged or stealth facilities are on this screen, and these are just some examples of some other facilities that could be accommodated in the future with this P.A.D. amendment. With regard to P.A.D. amendments, these review criteria have to be evaluated, and the staff report does go into each of these. And staff, as well as planning commission, found that the request did address these items. Regarding the notification process, it met all that is required by city code. As a result of the notification process, we did not receive any comments. At its January 5th meeting, Planning Commission, on a vote of 7-0, did move to forward to city council a motion to approve this P.A.D. There was a technical modification associated with that recommendation, however, that technical modification has since been addressed. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions, council? All right, this is a public hearing, so as a public hearing, I will open the floor to anybody who would like to address this issue. Please come forward and state your name and your address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Jean Henderson, Box 10061, Casa Grande, 85130. My concern is, is there some reason they could not move that further away from town rather than to have it near schools and in the area that they're having it? Because I was seeing it in my head, you know, where it's going to be positioned, and I don't know why they can't put these further away than just slamming them into the town, and they are eyesore's, and even when those coverings are over them, I just, I just don't feel right about it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
If you'd like, I can address that. The applicant is also here, though.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Raj Dastri. I represent Sun State Towers. I don't have any further presentation to give, but I am here to answer questions. Mr. Mayor, the last question was, why do we need to be in this location? Why can't we be further from town? The very basic answer to that is, we need to be where the customers are using their devices. You may all be surprised to know that high school students tend to need their electronics in their hands at all times. I've got one myself, and he's this constantly. But that neighborhood requires coverage. Verizon does not have coverage there. AT&amp;T has a little bit, I don't think T-Mobile has much right now at all. We have several sites throughout town. One, we've actually started to talk to staff at the reclamation facility, looking at going over there, because these sites can cover a couple of miles. We can't be up on top of a mountain anymore. The site's already on top of the mountain. It's been there forever. As technology has grown and more and more customers start using the networks, we need sites where the people are, so that's why we've proposed this.
And my understanding is that the G5-type network has to be closer anyway?
Yeah, in general, 5G needs to be closer.
5G, sorry, G5. That's a jet, I think. Sorry, it was my company jet.
So I don't know if you have any more questions, Mr. Mayor, council members?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your explanation. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on this issue? All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number, sorry. Ordinance number 1178.033.02. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Quartzon-Hennis planned area development, adopted for property generally located at the southeast corner of Cottonwood Lane and Arizona Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1178.033.02 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, that pretty much concludes tonight's business, and the next item on our agenda, or last item on our agenda really, is the reports. So I'm going to start with you, Anthony.
I have none for tonight. Just thankful to be back home. I've been away for a couple of weeks, so.
Okay. Well, welcome back home.
Yeah.
Donna?
Just a couple of things. Attended the Cactus flying this weekend, what a great crowd, and then they also had the studio tours. Kudos to the fire department. They had a really nice awards banquet. There's just so much going on in town, so people are out and about, the weather's good, so just be careful. That's it.
Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. Spent a great morning with the Casa Grande Youth Commission on Saturday again. They're getting ready for spring break, but in the meantime, they've been making Instagram and TikTok videos, so look for the Casa Grande Youth Commission. They're promoting their Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship right now, open to juniors and seniors in Casa Grande area, three different categories, so look that up. It's on the new website, too. Thank you very much. And lots of thanks to the PIO Department and also the Community Services for helping with them getting that going. And just as a reminder, I'm going to hit it every time, it's next month still, but April 22nd is the Earth Day, and it's also Shredding Day and E-Cycle Day at First American Credit Union on Pinal with the Casa Grande Youth Commission. So we'll see you there. More information forthcoming. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Matt. Mr. Lavender?
I really don't have anything. I just hope all our families enjoy spring break. The high school will be off for the next two weeks, the elementary the next week.
So hopefully, you'll get a little vacation, too, right? The, a couple of things, just the Latino Familia Initiative, I think the council got a flyer or email that they're going to, we're going to be honoring a memorial bench for David Snyder. So if any of you would like to come, that's Friday at 5:00 p.m. at the Neon Park sign. So we would love to have you join us, and anyone else in the community with that would like to honor David Snyder. We, let's see, the Community Service Department, I was really excited to see some of the activities that you have going on, you know, the rec dine and dash, the food truck events that you have coming in March, April, and May. have coming in March, April, and May. It says there's a field day activities, obstacle courses, different games. You know, this is something that the community is always asking, you know, what is there to do? I had a friend of mine I met with that I graduated high school with many years ago that just moved back to Casa Grande from California, and of course, she's like, what is there to do in this community? So, you know, it's it's things like this that are, and especially this time of year, that's that's exciting, so I think now we just have to get the word out and make sure people know what's going on. So thank you for for everything you're doing there. Fire Department, just congratulations to all those that that received some of those outstanding awards. It was great being there with you, Chief, and your staff, and celebrating all those accomplishments. And then finally, the on March twenty-fifth, for all of you that want to go to the Dancing for the Stars, I will be there. I will be one of the dancers, as I said several weeks ago. It has been very interesting and challenging, as the mayor knows, that's something that you're just out of my comfort zone, but the mayor did challenge the city of Maricopa's mayor, so.
That's right.
Councilmember.
I don't want to be wearing a Maricopa jersey.
Exactly. So we need some, this is a fundraiser, so I would love any support. You have to go on and vote at dancingforthestars.net, and if you go on and vote for myself and my partner, Mica, it'll go, but there are five, five of us from the city of Casa Grande.
Or Kelly Harrington.
And five people from. Where's the team player here, right? But anyways, there's five people from Maricopa and five from Casa Grande, but it is a fundraiser, so any support, any vote would be really, really appreciated, and if you want a table, there's still tables available. It'll it'll be a fun event, kind of funny, but fun event, too, so that's it for me.
Thanks, Lisa. Bob?
Not much to report, just the anticipation and the excitement of the mayor's state of the city this Wednesday.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it, Mayor.
Yeah, me, too. And just to add to that, if you really want to see a good show, and I shouldn't call it a show, a presentation, it involves your entire council, so they will all be on display on Wednesday.
On display, right?
On display, on Wednesday, so if you want some excitement, I'd show up early because I think it's going to be a packed house. I think it was standing room only. We may have to put some chairs outside. We'll see. Hopefully, the weather is good, but please, but please come and enjoy the program, because I think it'll be educational as well. Also, just as a reminder, the Chambers Biz Outlook Luncheon on I-ten widening, if you're interested in I-ten widening, we will have the ADOT engineer who's in charge of that section of highway for the widening for ADOT. He will be, he will have a brief presentation, so he'll give an update, and then I will also be there to give an update from the, probably from the financial side, since he's just dealing with the actual construction side. So that's Friday, March thirty-first, eleven to one P.M. Unfortunately, it won't be David Snyder's deal, because I've got the ULI Trends Day all day on Friday. That's up in Phoenix, so that's, I'm looking forward to that, and I don't have a whole That's probably about it. We're in the middle of our budget process, so keep your ears out and open for that, and we'll continue to update everybody, and then really, I don't want to steal a whole lot of thunder because we're going to have it on Wednesday, so. That being said, anything else for the good of the order? Anyone? All right, seeing none, then tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.